I think I see a calming of the crowd, which means that we can start. This is the work session, Tuesday, June 28, 2011. Want to call you to order. This is the second agenda item is opportunity for citizen comments for things that are not on the agenda. And I see no one...
We do have someone.
Are they working their way?
This is you.
Not on the agenda?
Something not on the agenda?
Something not on the agenda.
Oh.
This is the time for people to make comments.
Citizen comments for things that are not on the agenda.
I was here to listen to an agenda item.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next is a presentation of Franklin Tomorrow's decade report.
Thank you for giving us a few minutes tonight to present Franklin Tomorrow's decade report. I'm Mindy Tate, Executive Director for Franklin Tomorrow, and this is Dan Runn, who serves as President of our Board of Directors. It has often been said that for bad things to happen, good people only have to do nothing. And Franklin Tomorrow was founded in early 2000 by a small group of leaders, community leaders, who recognized that something needed to be done to ensure that Franklin's future would be as rich in meaning and spirit as well as in buildings and businesses as its past. Its essential attributes, those qualities that are at the heart of its attraction, would need to be ensured through a broad-based strategic effort. And that group organized themselves into the Board of Directors of Franklin Tomorrow, and their names, that was a citizen, they also then formed a citizen-based steering committee committee of 50 members that met regularly through the first 12 months of this process, which actually began in 2000. And those 50 members are listed on page two of our decade report. In April 2001, seven public idea gathering meetings were held throughout the community, and several of you who were here participated as both facilitators and participants in offering ideas and suggestions. All citizens and interested parties were invited to attend, and in those meetings, participants worked in small groups with trained volunteer facilitators. These ideas were organized based on certain topics, and in addition, participants told us about what they treasured most about this community, and they offered several hundred treasures. In May 2001, a community summit was held, and at that summit, participants developed goals for the 10 topics that were identified by the community as essential to Franklin's future. And those 10 topics were business, community character, education, environment, government, growth and development, housing, people, recreation, and transportation. And then in July 2001, we held the Vision Fair over a two-day period, first at the factory and then in downtown Franklin as part of a festival, the Jaguar Festival that was held here. The recommendations were presented in the form of 10 goals and 66 strategies, supporting strategies. In addition, an overall vision statement was developed to capture the essence of these goals and strategies. You can find the vision and mission statement of Franklin Tomorrow on the front page of the decade report. In November of 2001, 50 Franklin area residents volunteered to participate in a one-half-day work session to work with the results of the Vision Fair. And with that, those 10 topics were paired to nine, removing the people aspect because people goes across all aspects of the other nine goal and strategy areas. And they also recommended a priority strategy for their topic, and with these activities in this report, the Board of Directors of Franklin Tomorrow had a blueprint for shaping Franklin's future. We officially began in June of 2002 the implementation process, and we did that by hiring our first executive director, and that was Susan Minor, and the 10, then nine strategic priority areas were reviewed. The first task force areas were identified, and citizen task forces in business, education, environment, housing, and recreation were formed and began addressing community issues. And I want to just stop by saying that this report was prepared by our Board of Directors, but I want to really point to Dan Clatt, who's on our Board of Directors, who did the design and layout of this report, so we're really excited about that. So I'll turn it over to Dan.
Sure. Moving ahead, in 2005, Franklin Tomorrow started a process to review its original goals and strategies because things do change, and Franklin was changing. And we collected public input and developed a plan of action. Three critical areas comprised this effort: strategy roundtables, a Vision Fair, and a Board of Directors workshop. And at the roundtables, community leaders assessed implementation efforts to date and also proposed new strategies. And the Vision Fair also provided the public with the opportunity to review the existing strategies and give additional ideas. The board then used the feedback from this effort and laid out revised goals and strategies for 2006 and beyond. Currently, and for the last six or seven months, we've had hundreds of individuals in the community working in strategy groups to update this vision, and it's progressing at various speeds. Some groups are almost done with their work, and some are just really getting started. You can see on page three of the report that we've given you who the different co-chairs are leading the process, and it's a great cross-section of the community. In compiling the decade report, our Board of Directors and officers was able to see our great impact during the last 10 years. Education efforts such as the New Growth Deep Roots Lecture Series, or the Work of Task Forces on Affordable Housing and Green Buildings, Franklin Tomorrow's had an impact in many areas on the city's future, which has now become the present over the last 10 years. We hope to have an even greater impact on the city's tomorrows. One of the things that's really just been given birth recently is, especially through our work in partnership with the City of Franklin, is the Friends of Franklin Parks Initiative. And that's something you're going to be hearing more about, and it's actually, again, in the report. Friends of Franklin Parks was formed in April of this year, and it's a nonprofit entity as a limited liability company which will serve as a vehicle for tax-deductible donations for needed improvement in the city of Franklin's 16 parks. Next week, the Board of Directors of Franklin Tomorrow is going to appoint the initial board for this organization, and from that point forward, we can actually begin to do work. But I think really, the real point is, we're very thankful for the long-term partnership we've had with the City of Franklin and also with the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and we appreciate that, and we look forward to many more years of partnership. Mindy?
And currently, Alderman Berger serves as an ex-officio member of our executive committee and has been very involved in the last year in that, and we invite any of you to come to our regularly scheduled monthly membership, monthly board meetings, which are held on the second Friday of every month, usually at the police headquarters at 11:30. We are involved in a number of events and activities. The Breakfast with the Mayors has become a very popular series, and the next one of those is set for September 20. And we have extended an invitation to a national-level speaker to come and speak about sustainable communities. And it's a partnership between the Department of Transportation, the Environmental Protection Agency, and Housing and Urban Development, and we're very excited about the potential for that on September 20. And then our next big event is our shrimp boil on July 9, where we'll be honoring the exemplary community volunteers here in Franklin that were nominated by various nonprofit and charitable organizations, and that's July 9 at the factory. And you all are invited, and tickets are just $50, and fortunately, $25 of that is tax-deductible, again, because of the great support we receive from the community, the local business community. I think it's important to say that Franklin Tomorrow, from the beginning, our idea has been that this is an organization to give voice to the people who live, work, and play in Franklin, and that covers everyone, because Franklin holds a special place in the hearts of many people who live in Middle Tennessee, maybe not in Franklin, but who live in Middle Tennessee. And so this is an exciting time for us to present the decade report to you, the work that's going on with Friends of Franklin Parks, and if you have any questions, we'll be happy to take those. Beth?
Mindy, would you, since this is being televised, would you give the number of the Franklin Tomorrow office and an email address where people can get ahold of you, because I think we need to let the people know that this is a broad organization, we want people from all over the city involved, and the county involved in this.
Right, and I should mention that the decade report is available, will be downloaded now on our website at www.franklindomorrow.org. My office number is 794-0998, and my email is simply mindy@franklindomorrow.org. And we have people involved from across Middle Tennessee, and we encourage, you don't have to be, there's no membership, you can be a supporter of Franklin Tomorrow, but there's no membership associated with being involved with Franklin Tomorrow. We try to keep as many of our events free and open to the public as we can. Our breakfast with the mayors are that, thanks to the generous sponsorship of organizations like First Farmers Bank, and so we really appreciate that anyone can participate in our organization. There's always a way to find a way for people to be involved in our city. Follow us on Facebook, Franklin Tomorrow, and then we're on Twitter as well, so...
And there's also sponsorships available for the, like, the mayor's breakfast and the other organizations, or the other events that we plan for businesses and people to, even individuals to sponsor, so...
Yes.
I just wanted to get that out there, because a lot of people will be watching this, and they might not know that.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you for what you do.
Thanks.
For your support.
Item number four, presentation regarding Franklin's census data.
We, a month or so ago, we received the census data that showed significant growth for the city of Franklin, and as the weeks have moved on, we've started to get more additional information and wanted to just share with you some of the data that's come available regarding the census and some of the comparative information, and just give that to you as food for thought about how the community is changing over the last 10 years and beyond. So go ahead, Catherine, and take us through.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. We're real excited that we're starting to get the census data, and it's really showing an increase in population for Franklin. Since 2000, we have grown 49 percent. Females continue to be a higher population than males here in Franklin.
That's great.
We'll have no comments like that tonight, okay?
That's what I'm getting to next. I am getting to that next.
Now, listen up.
Yes.
This took an unexpected turn.
Yes, it did. Yeah, so they... The age group, both male and female, between 25 and 44, continue to be the largest of our age groups. However, you will see a large percentage increase in the elderly, and that pretty much reflects what is happening nationwide. You'll see down here, 85 and over, 118 percent increase from 2000. Although the numbers are small, you see the trend. Additionally, families and married couples, as you would guess, continue to be the largest population of households. However, again, we're beginning to see households, single people living in households, and non-family households as an increase in percentage over what happened in 2000. So you, and that also probably is following trends in the nation. Many people are widowed, people are living by themselves for, because they choose to remain single. Whatever the reason is, there are more now households with just single people living in them. Additionally, as we look at the breakdown of population, we have a slight decrease in African-American population. We have a much larger percentage increase, again, starting from very low numbers, but you see the percentage increases in the Hispanic and Asian populations, and that's a trend that we would anticipate continuing into the next decade. Again, owner occupied remains the highest, although renter occupied percentage has grown in the last 10 years, and we see a lot of apartments and interest in apartments coming through our department, so we would anticipate that that number will also continue if this trend continues. In general, I think that Franklin pretty much reflects what is happening in the nation as a whole. However, we certainly have unique, unique things that will set us apart. We don't have the income figures yet, and I think that will be very telling when we get those income figures for both households and families. Does anybody have questions?
You can kind of look at this as a first installment in a series. As we get more information, are able to do some analysis, we'll come back and just share that with you. It's just important to give you a better look at the profile of the community.
Great report. Thank you. Item number five, consideration of authorization to the city administrator in an interlocal agreement between the city of Brentwood and the city of Franklin for the purchase, installation, and maintenance of a weather warning siren.
Ask Chief Garzirk and Assistant Chief Horton to join us, and let me just qualify, one of the reasons we've stated this as giving the administrator authority is their details related to this agreement we're still working out, and that relate to how the different roles between Franklin and Brentwood in this shared effort. And essentially, the content that's in the agreement, that's in your packet, will stay there. It's a matter of the assignment of responsibilities, and that's still part of what we're working through. I guess Chief Garzirk or Assistant Chief Horton, take it away.
Go ahead, Todd.
Thank you. Of course, as you remember, in November, we presented to the board a scenario of how we chose to expand the tornado warning siren system, and in that, we talked about entering into joint agreements with the city of Brentwood and with Williamson County, and the board seemed to favor that inner relationship, so this is just the next step in doing that. We initially chose a site in the city of Brentwood that since has not worked out, and that's why the agreement is not in place at this time for your full consideration. We are looking in the area of Franklin Road and Moores Lane, and now we are tentatively looking at our site, our Drive Branch Park site. However, there is some TDOT-approved roadway construction that will happen in that area, and so we want to just ensure that if we choose that intersection for the siren location, that it's put in a place where it would not have to be moved once TDOT does expand the roadway. So we're working diligently to get all of those answers upfront before we actually finalize on a site location. And then with the board's approval, Brentwood has already purchased the siren, they've already went to bid and purchased the siren. We would be asking for the monies to be approved for us to pay them now, out of this year's budget for our half of the siren, not to exceed $18,000, and then authorize the city administrator and the legal department to negotiate the terms of the contract and actually enter into the agreement with the city of Brentwood.
Questions?
Well done.
Well done. Number six, consideration of ordinance 2011-16, an ordinance to amend the Title X of the Franklin Municipal Code to clarify applicability of Chapter 1 and to adopt by reference the rules and regulations pertaining to regulation of dogs and cats in Williamson County, Tennessee, as adopted by the County Commission of Williamson County.
This essentially provides for consistency across the county, and the county, essentially, animal control provides that services, the services on behalf of the city, and so that the baseline of rules and regulations are consistent across the county. This provides for that, has been requested by Williamson County, and we're recommending moving forward with that, to have that, have that in place. I would suggest if there are specific additional things we want to do at some point as a city, we can look at that, but this provides for a baseline of rules and regulations related to dog and cat, dogs and cats in our community.
Questions? Alderman Berger.
I just want to add something in.
We've got an echo tonight.
Yeah, there is an echo. I'll stay back. I talked to Shawna about this, and we'll probably, we have some people that have contacted me that really want to see the city and the county, so I mentioned to them that they need to go to the county and take a presentation to the county. But I just want to mention this to us, because these people who are out of town right now can't be here tonight, and I've gotten numerous emails today about it and said, "We can't be there, so will you please just mention it?" And I want to mention it to the aldermen, that at some time, I think we should look at bringing forth, strengthening the tethering laws of animals, especially dogs, that's usually who it pertains to. And they sent me some research on, in fact, Clarksville just established a new tethering law, or a tethering law that's limited to so many hours, and there's been a lot of abuse in, with the dogs in this area, even in all of Tennessee, and that's a problem that they have. And then there's a whole list of counties and cities and states that have strengthening their tether laws in the last few years, and they sent me information on it, so at some point in time, I'd like to bring that forward and ask the other aldermen to consider maybe strengthening our tethering law to protect the animals, so they're not out tethered to a stationary pole where they can't run, and they can't have shade, and they can't have any shelter. And that is a problem more than we know. And it's very sad when you look at the pictures and you look at the statistics here in our county, and our city even, and I just want to bring that up so that we'll be aware of it.
And that's something that we could go to the county and discuss, that option, is my understanding?
Future consideration, and if they alter their regulations, ours would follow, because we're essentially adopting the rules they have in place by reference in this, in this ordinance.
I do have a question, though. Even though we're adopting their rules and regs, is it possible, and I believe it is, that we can ourselves establish a regulation that would strengthen the tethering laws that would be within our city limits?
I think you could consider something beyond that. You'd need to look at how enforcement works with them, because they're doing enforcement on your behalf. That would just be something we'd need to have a discussion with them about.
I've asked the group of people to also put together a presentation and really take it to the county, so that maybe they could change it at the county level that would cover all the people who, all the cities that have come on board with regs.
I think it'd be good to do.
If it's impossible, it needs to come, because of the enforcement, it really needs to come from the county.
Because we don't have an enforcement agency ourselves.
Well, that's the question I have, and I'd like to have that answer at some point, even though we're not the enforcers, because we don't have animal control, although, could we not establish a stronger tethering law within our city?
I think you can look at it. You'd need to work with your enforcement arrangement and how that would work with them as you do it.
I understand.
County would cover a broader scale and would be probably more direct, if you can get it down at a county level.
And I think they will be going to the county, too. Yeah, so, okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
What does this mean for cats on a leash?
Ruts are ruts.
I'm sure somebody in this room, Mr. Bacon, would be, would be happy to know if there's supposed to be a cat leash law.
I'd be for that one.
I don't know what you, what are you...
I'm not sure at the county level at this time what that actually means, but I can definitely get you an answer and stuff.
There've been some concerns in West Haven about that, too. And how do you put a leash on a cat?
They're hard to find at vet stores, too.
Alter, alter. It won't last as long.
We've got four or five at home I'd be glad to share with you, Marty.
Leashes of cats.
Well, leashes and cat harnesses.
I mean, I have seen people use them in the parks and stuff.
Really?
Yeah, I know they exist, I just don't know that much about cats.
Cats don't do well with leashes.
So the question in here, a barking dog that's a nuisance, then will be enforced by animal control?
Which is essentially the arrangement we had, but they want to have a consistent set of rules and regulations for the communities that they serve across the county.
If not, when they cross into the city of Franklin and stuff, they have to stop and say, "Well, I'm in the city of Franklin now." There's different ordinances and stuff. This keeps everything consistent.
Okay.
Makes it a lot easier to enforce the rules and the law.
They could file, still file a complaint in general sessions.
How about that?
Oh, the right to file, it would have to be by the individual, so it's not a ticket or anything. I see. One other issue, I know this is cats and dogs, but two, three years ago, we had an issue of a pot-bellied pig that was causing, you know, yes, it was a pet, but it was still wallowing and causing problems. Is there some way we could tack that kind of...
It's a different area, is that just mine?
Yeah, this is just separating cats and dogs.
Dog and cat.
Okay. It doesn't, because we weren't able to do anything about it, other than just the nuisance of the smell, because it was considered a pet and not livestock, but I think...
Were they planning to eat it?
No.
Well, then it was a pet.
But it still wallows like a non-pet, you know, and causes those problems.
Pig's gonna be a pig, man.
Okay. I agree.
Where did it wallow, Mike?
In the backyard, to the nuisance.
Do we want to go back to the census data, or are you...
I'll look right on here. Pig wallowing.
Section 10-101 talks about running at large, and swine is included. Swine are included.
So swine have to have...
Swan is, swine are.
Get a leash for a pig.
But it still doesn't prevent it from wallowing, I guess.
Only God can solve that.
But, Mike, you know that there were more problems than that. There was mud in the backyard and smell for the neighbors, and it escalated to five other problems.
Right.
And so the health department has to be called in there.
So what would be our avenue to strengthen...
We already have regulations that deal with it.
Well, we look foolish if we go two, three years and the same thing comes up again.
Maybe that's something that goes to the county at the same time we discuss the tethering.
I don't like birds. Can we get rid of birds?
They have citations.
Geese, geese. I don't like geese.
Oh, okay, it's time to move on.
Now that you've mentioned that, we're gonna move to number seven, consideration of request for 311's telephone...
And I'll tell you the one problem, that is, lead to five, I'll tell you the one problem with geese, but not publicly.
Mike, you have a story.
We must have a history with geese.
Item number seven. If you want to go back to the census, we can just...
No, I'm not going to the census.
You need to clarify that you're below the age of 85.
I just saw potential clients on here for the jail placement.
Oh, I see. There you go. I like your thoughts.
They're all potential clients.
That's true.
Well, let me give you the background on the 311 system and what we're looking at doing. This would be an application that we would like to request board approval for us to proceed with, an application to the Tennessee Regulatory Authority, TRA, to have authorization to operate a 311 system here in Franklin. And this is really a fairly low cost altogether, and we actually are updating, have updated our phone system to provide for a lot of this kind of service, so there's really not necessarily a significant cost beyond that, but does provide an easy-to-remember number that is an alternative for non-emergency basic city service requests and informational calls. A number of cities across the country and across the state use it already. It is one that they divvy up within a region, within a county, and so you ask first, you receive the opportunity to have the system first. So we'd like to reserve that right. It will take us the better part of a year to get to the position that we'd really be implementing the program, but really feel that it's worth us pursuing to provide an easier access system for folks to call and get service, get questions answered. We'll help divert some of the unnecessary calls that you may get from time to time on 911 and free up those resources better as well. You know, this really just moves us into the application process and will help us further develop this, and we'll come back to you as we're ready to look at implementation strategies. But one of the things our existing phone system gives us is the ability to work with this with a minimal staff impact.
Number eight, consideration, consideration of the construction contract award to BVC and Company Incorporated for the Harpeth River Greenway Project in the amount of $202,768.
He's got a green shirt on, too.
Yes. This is part of the Third Avenue Extension Project. I believe you forwarded some information this afternoon, a map. We've received a grant from TDEC, and we'll receive about $100,000 for this grant. In order to be able to spend this money, we split the, this project out from the rest of Third Avenue, because we're going through some reviews with TDOT right now, but we split this out in order to be able to utilize that grant funding. So this is just a portion of the, of the trail. It's marked on there as the TDEC-funded concrete trail. So that would be just this, this portion right now, then the rest of it, it would tie into the Third Avenue project when that gets completed.
Questions? Number nine, consideration of the Tennessee Historical Commission grant for the design restoration assistance of the main barn at the park at Harlem's Dale Farm in the sum of $25,000 from the National Park Service.
And we had worked on this following some feedback from the board a couple meetings ago. Lisa and Catherine have worked with the Historic Commission to go over this and let them talk through where we are now with the agreement.
Okay. Basically, we met with the state. The state was agreeable to changing the covenant...
Okay, basically, we met with the state. The state was agreeable to changing the covenants to allow the covenant to cover only the barn, which I know was the main concern that everybody had. And Lisa, do you want to?
And this is just to dry out the barn.
This is just, it's not interior, this is exterior roof, drying it out.
I want to have some interior just because of the beams and things that you know that we have to. But not designed. This is part of that $44,000 that you pre-ordered. $25,000 would be applied to.
Great, good money.
When do we get it?
As soon as we sign it.
And this is, it's on your voting meeting tonight too.
Can we start very soon?
When can we start?
Well, the design part has started. This will come in, this will be just a funding mechanism in accompanying to that. But it has, it's been started since we.
Probably, yeah, a couple of months ago.
We don't want to wait until next year and say it's not been done yet.
We're on a deadline with the theme of money for the roof project and so we've got to, we're on the ball.
That's good.
And the state's very anxious to give us the money too.
Oh, let's take it.
Okay, thank you. Number 10, consideration of ordinance 2099-55 and ordinance to amend the city of Franklin, municipal code Title 11, Chapter 4, offenses against the peace and quiet.
And our city attorney and police chief are coming up to help join in the discussion. This is an item we talked about back in May, had some discussion, had a number of interested citizens and business owners also appear before the board. And we went back and reviewed the comments we heard from you all that night as well as had some further discussion with both of those groups individually to talk through what we were looking at in terms of the ordinance overall, what their interests were, what they would do if they were writing an ordinance and how these pieces might fit together. And a couple variations or a couple adjustments to the ordinance from what we talked about in May came through as common themes, some of which you talked about that night, which is to first focus in on, in commercial areas in particular, amplified sound. That that was really the cause of virtually all the concern related from commercial establishments, that amplified sound was what created the greatest disruption, to focus in on that. To also differentiate Friday and Saturday from the rest of the week, that there were some other considerations in terms of time and some ability to work with that that might make sense within the community as well. And then to just further differentiate residential and commercial and to also describe how mixed use would work as well. So we walked through those issues with both groups, actually met with the business owners first and their sense was fine cover amplified sound. They had requested that Friday and Saturday time limits go till midnight and then the rest of the week go till 11:00 PM. And there, and you remember our previous proposed standard in terms of distance had been 50 feet. They suggested 100 yards. So we had that. We had a similar discussion with a group of residents and went through somewhat the same discussion, shared with them what the business owners were looking at because that discussion had already happened. And I would say the general acceptance, maybe not their favorite, but the general acceptance that came back from that discussion was to look at an 11 o'clock standard for Friday and Saturday and a 10 o'clock standard for weekdays, Sunday through Thursday. And both those would start at the 11 o'clock or 10 o'clock respectively and then end at 7:00 AM. There is also some language that we put in that generally gets at disturbance that would take place in the non-restricted hours, that if something is just so disturbing or, you know, that there's some opportunity for judgment if someone is really just overdoing it in the middle of the afternoon, that it is such a disturbance in the neighborhood that that could still be followed up on. It's a judgment call, but it at least provides some opportunity if there is a clear abuse or problem being created by amplification. Within mixed use, we tried to really mirror the components within mixed use with whatever the predominant use is in that area with the standard that was provided for in commercial and residential. With the commercial, the primarily commercial area being subject to a 50-foot standard and a 11 o'clock on weekends, Friday, Saturday, and a 10 o'clock on the weekdays. Then the primarily residential areas had a standard that basically matched the residential language that we put in the rest of the ordinance. I don't know if Sean or David have other items to add to that discussion, but I wanted to just summarize. You know, there's been a lot of discussion back and forth and some give and take from the various entities trying to look at how we do this with our goal at the end of the day to make this understandable to residents and businesses alike, but also clearly and plainly enforceable for the folks that are responsible for responding to those calls, especially from the Franklin Police Department when those come in.
I'd like to make one quick comment before we start asking questions. I know we do have some people in the audience, but I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce to those in the TV audience that don't know, we have a new police chief and he's sitting here with us tonight, Chief Rehensky. Congratulations on your selection and.
Yeah, if you could take your memo and write, mark out the word interim.
That was an old memo.
Are we gonna take questions first or are we gonna do comments from individuals?
That's your phone.
Okay.
It sounded like there was some degree of compromise.
Let's clarify one thing first, if we're gonna hear from anybody. I just want to make sure that when you talk about that, that people understand, and we talked about this, Shawna, and we'll go over this again, that at 11 o'clock, 10 o'clock, right, on weekdays, 11 o'clock on the weekends, that's talking about you don't need to stop your music, you just need to stop the amplification.
You just.
No. Still, you can still have.
Turn it down.
You can still have your music. But no amplification.
Well.
You can have amplification, just not, not so that it's heard from however many people.
They can take it inside, they can leave it outside, but if the amplification will be turned down or whatever so that, so we're not saying you have to stop your music.
We never said you have to stop your music.
I just want that said.
And we've moved, we've continued to move away from a decibel meter reading, but to a distance in amplified sound. And I don't know if I mentioned it, 100 feet is where, what we're proposing now after all this, the discussion that we've had. So I don't know that we've completely satisfied everybody, but we, I think we've moved along together to at least a framework here that from a staff perspective, we think is a workable approach.
Do y'all want to make any more comments? If not, would y'all like?
I'd like to get another clarification.
Sure.
Whenever it talks about commercial, does it take into consideration at all that there is some commercial that is directly abutting residential?
That would be in the mixed use.
But now, it just, it doesn't say, it doesn't say mixed use districts. It said, I took that to mean a mixed use zone and I'm not talking about that.
Well, the way it's worded, if you are in a commercial zone that abuts a residential, you have that 100-foot buffer regardless of.
Well, see, that's, but if you're in an actual mixed use district, you only have to have 50 feet, right?
If you're in the specific section you call residential, yes. But if you're in the commercial section of the mixed use, then it's 100 feet.
No, it's 50.
But my clarification, or my question for clarification is, what about, and this is where it occurs downtown, you have commercial directly abutting residential?
Yes.
Not as a part of mixed use? I did not see that addressed.
This would be the 100-foot standard. The commercial standard would apply.
Why?
Because the noise is.
It's coming from a commercial establishment.
So you're saying it doesn't matter about the residence?
It's, the standard is it's a commercial zoned area and it's 100 feet. That's what this proposes.
Well, and that's what we're talking about.
From the property line.
So, but in a mixed use, then it has a different standard for the 50 feet. And I think that is something that needs to be discussed now that I understand. Yeah, I do too. And like in West Haven, McKay's Mill, you've got commercial right there next to residential, mixed use. And so the 100-foot would apply there.
The 50-foot would apply.
In a mixed use zone.
But if you're in a clearly residential section of a mixed use development, like in West Haven, you can clearly see.
Townhome.
Yeah, where the actual residences are versus the commercial section, then it's gonna be more of a residential review.
Well, let me ask you, can't you not see that in some other areas where the resident, where it is a residential zone and it is immediately next to a commercial zone? I think that, I think you're being stricter in the mixed use.
What we could do is look, like if you look in our definition section at the front.
I did, yep.
You'll see what we've called residential versus what we call commercial. If there's any of those commercial districts that you feel is, leans more toward a buffering section to a residential area, we could pull that out. I mean, we can call, we could do something separate with that.
Well, that's what I'd like to think about.
Well, what about the circumstance where, let's say, Sopatia decided to have a mariachi band?
Yeah, now that's, that's a commercial area and the people who live above a restaurant, that's just, it's a commercial area. They have until 11:00. After 11:00 though, they could probably complain, but not until then. And I'm hoping that maybe we can work with planning to talk about adding some of these restricted covenants as we're doing with, through the green properties. If you live above a restaurant or a commercial district, I think you should sign something saying you understand that.
Yeah, you sort of trust that.
Well, we are doing that for other, newer.
When you park in front of the restaurant and got an elevator and went up above, you signed.
I agree with you.
But now, you know, I really, I agree with Ann. This is, we've got downtown, we have residential areas abutting commercial areas.
That's just downtown.
And.
Well, you're right, you're right. You can talk about downtown because I know you live here and you represent this area. I represent the Cool Springs area and we have areas that are like that as well.
You have a commercial, the music venues?
Well, there are.
And the, all right, well, anyway, I think we need to address it. And I think, I don't know whether you want us to talk about this now or not, but.
I think we are. So I think we'll have a session, then I'll give you a break and then get the audience to participate.
We're talking about, you're talking about 10:00 and 11:00. I would say that is too late. I would say for outside music, 9:00 from Monday through Thursday and then 10:00 Friday and Saturday. And on Sunday, I think they need a permit. Because this place down here on the corner, Sunday night, I've heard from the neighbors, was absolutely impossible. They did not have a permit, I do not think, that.
Which place?
Arch Gallery.
Gallery 202. I live right across the street from it.
So you enjoyed the music?
I don't, I knew they were having something, but it wasn't offensive to me and.
Well, but I think on Sunday night, you'd have to have a permit to have loud outside music.
What Sunday?
I think that's a day of, that a lot of people call it a day of rest. And you call it what you want to, but that's what I call it.
This would be easier if we just banned music and dancing.
No, but I tell you, I tell you Dana, the people that are for doing away with the noise ordinance are people who do not, who live in neighborhoods where there is no evasion of their privacy or their quiet, except maybe occasional parties.
I got woken up by a landlord at 7:00 this morning. Who do I call and complain to?
Oh, Dana.
Well, what's the difference?
Chief Rehensky gave out his number the other day.
Every night, every night when there's music playing in your bedroom. And I went into some of the bedrooms of the homes that had called. Went into their bathrooms and I heard the music. So I know it's there and I know that they are, that their privacy is being invaded.
We have to decide whether or not we want to have a downtown that people come to, hang out in and enjoy themselves and have ice cream and music and movies and all the rest of that stuff, or whether we want to roll up the streets and send everybody home at 9:00. Simple as that. Take your pick.
All right, I'd like to tell you that Saturday night, I went to the Bungarnut Pig. There was not a single parking place available in the Bungarnut Pig. They had soft music playing. I sat in the parking lot and listened. Nobody was objecting to the soft music. They were having a wonderful time. It was not objectionable to them. Nobody went home. Nobody was complaining that the music was not blaring. And this was Saturday night at 9:15. 9:00 or 9:15. So it can be done. You don't have to shut down the town.
Let's have some comments from citizens in the audience that want to make some comments. So who wants to be recognized and come up and make some comments? To, any other ones? Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead and make your comment, Michael, and then we'll wait one second for you.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Is there a potential that because of the number of feet, that a residence could be excluded because it would be a small lot on this 100-foot situation? That we'd say, oh, you're within 100 feet of this, so you don't count? That we need to provide some kind of?
If the commercial abuts a residential area and we agree that 100 feet is what's proper and all the commercial areas are proper the way they're written, then yeah, that could definitely happen. If you are next door to, if you're a residential house right next door to commercial, you are inside that 100 feet and it would not.
It's likely, if it's disturbing to you, it's gonna violate the 100-foot standard as well.
Right.
So you have to pick something. You may not cover everybody with the exact measurement. This is where you're trying to find the right balance.
The conditions then for the special permit, is there anything? What kind of assurance? Or are we just saying, you've asked for it, we gave it to you and you can do this anyway?
Now, each special event permit, you can actually do that better than I can, they're very, they're very.
There are specific criteria as to the hours, the crowd that's anticipated, the duty officers, how the streets and traffic will be controlled. The special events permits are reviewed individually.
But how do we guarantee people that they're not gonna be disturbed with loud music?
Well, there's a cutoff time for every special event and that's when we can tell you there won't be. When you bring in 50,000 people, it's gonna be loud until, you know, it's time for everybody to go home. But we do put time for.
One of those times typically for a Main Street festival, it's not beyond the 11 o'clock or 10 o'clock standard, so.
The festival's generally around dusk, at 9:00, 10:00 is, yeah, the time that's shut off. And most of the special event permits that we approve are actually daytime events. Like on tonight's agenda, there's several, they're all road races. It will entail some noise and some people, some additional traffic, but they'll be done before lunchtime. And that's the bulk of what we approve, Main Street type, the exception to the rule.
I've had complaints in the last month that were not things downtown that also occurred before 9:00 and I don't think they would fall in the special permit. So would it also apply to things on private property that are not in the downtown area? That we would have to approve?
If it's earlier in the day, probably not. We can't write something that will cover everything that will disturb one person or another. It's an establishment of a general standard across the board that tries to strike this balance of activity and vibrancy in our commercial districts with the respect and quiet that people want in their residential districts. So it's, that's what we're trying to hit here.
But there are specific rules for special event permits and I think there's like 200 people, isn't that the amount? Isn't that what starts it on certain private events? There's a number of people that are gonna be invited and at some point, you have to get a special event permit. So it may be that they should have gotten a special event permit and didn't.
Okay, and then the statement about, I'm sorry.
And then the statement about, I'm sorry, one more question, and I'll be through. An ordinance also allows for the ability to prohibit unreasonably loud noise at any other times, notwithstanding at the time restricted. What will be those criteria?
What we had discussed is, you may have a situation where my son and four other teenagers set up a garage band in my backyard, and it may be 12:00 in the afternoon, but if you can't hear emergency sirens, can't hear tornado warning sirens, if it's so loud as to really be unreasonable, that's what we were looking for, is a reasonable noise. We wanted the ability to be able to have some, I guess, the ability to have them turn it down.
Okay. But that is pretty much going to be discretion of the officer that would...
Yes.
Outside of the time limits.
Okay.
Let's be clear that passing this ordinance, we already have, but this'll just reiterate that the ice cream man is done.
Well, this one is.
Oh, yes.
Why in this ordinance?
This, well, the ordinance already says that you can't use bells, whistle sirens, noises to attract or to obtain business as a part of advertising. It already says that.
That's there now.
We haven't changed that. I mean, that's always been there. We haven't even gotten into talking about those kind of restrictions. Now, if that's something you want to talk about, we can get to that after we work through this, but we haven't changed that. So, yes, you're right.
There might be many parents that might be glad.
Let's go ahead and get some citizen comments. If you could pass the microphone down.
Hi, my name is Mark Goodson. I met with this group last time you all met regarding this topic, and I would be the first to acknowledge that you are all in a very precarious position to the extent that you have responsibility to represent your constituent base, and you have the responsibility to do what's in the best interest of the city. I think, as Dana mentioned, you know, as a whole, we kind of need to figure out what kind of city we want to be. Do we want to be, do we want to have a live, vibrant Main Street that coincides with all the good work that's been done with respect to the Franklin Theater and things of that nature? Do we want to roll up the streets at night? And that's not my decision to make. I can tell you that, on behalf of the Bunginut Pig, we have operated there, and my predecessors have operated there for what will be 25 years. This is our 25th year anniversary. Had a conversation with Ed Silva today, who was among the original five investors that opened that organization many, many years ago, and he reminded me of the fact that they have always run live music outside. So, I will also reiterate the fact that I think my wife and I and our management team have been quite responsible, tried very diligently to ensure that we are not a nuisance. That is the last thing in the world that we want to do or be. We want to be a place that is good for children, to people of all ages, and we don't want to do it in a way that's going to be, as I said, at all nuisance. So, we have by design elected never to run percussion and live bands outside. We don't do it. Now, we do run solo artists and duos and even trios at times outside with acoustic music. I have noticed that this group has honed in or focused on the issue of amplification, and the only thing that I would caution you on as you consider that path is the fact that by, by going with an ordinance whose focus is, or where the focus is amplified music, it still does not have, as Dana mentioned during this last meeting, any sort of objective measure. It's purely subjective. So, I think the police, though, yes, you, I've been a police officer, and I understand what it's like to be trusted by, you know, those who look to you to protect the community to make decisions with respect to, you know, the legal use of deadly force and those sorts of things. And yeah, we respect, you know, our public servants and know that they have to make discretionary calls all the time. But what I know is, as a business owner, it's my objective to make sure that we're operating well within the confines of the city ordinance. Now, I've owned this place for going on six years, and during fair weather in the summertime, when we do run music outside, we do two decibel checks. We do one when the music starts at 6:00, and then we come back and do another one at 8:00. We take it at four points on the perimeter, all right? We go up to Columbia Avenue, take a decibel check. We go to the far fence, we take a decibel check. We go all the way to the back, take a decibel check, and then go to the other side, do the same. We do not run above 65 decibels of the perimeter ever. I would suggest to this group that if you were to ever come with me as I do a decibel check, you would find that our voices at this level would register on that decibel meter a lot louder than what I pick up along the fence line. So, we do do our level best to be responsible citizens about it. I'll reiterate what I said in the very beginning. I think you are in a very difficult position to the extent that you have all types of environments. You have live music venues that are right next to homes, you have live music venues that are next to field. I mean, you can't necessarily apply one standard. So, what the right answer is, I don't know, but to kind of conclude, I wanted to make sure that you understand that we've been doing this for a long time, and we try really hard to do it professionally. I also wanted to advise this group that I don't know that my focus, if I were a member of this group, would be on amplified sound as much as my focus personally would be on a subjective measure of sound regardless if it's amplified or not. Because, you know, as Dana said, I, you know, you might be able to get rid of the amplification and take away a speaker or a mic, but you can go up and start a lawnmower, and it'd be every bit as loud as, you know, amplified sound. So, I'm not sure that that's necessarily the right path, though perhaps a convenient one. The other thing that I would say is, I would plead with this group not to make carve-outs. You know, if you're going to apply a standard to me and my business and the other business owners, then I hope that same standard will, will apply to high school football games, and churches, and Main Street festivals, and all the other things that occur, so as not to create a competitive advantage for some and a competitive disadvantage for others. Last but not least, and then I'll stop, I'm not really certain when this group refers to number of feet, how that applies to me. The best way I could describe it would be by saying, may I use this for a second, just as a, a model? If this is the property that I'm on, this rectangle, okay? And I'm up here in a small circle about the size of a quarter in my building, and then I've got a gazebo area outside the size of a quarter up here. And then the first house behind me is way down here. That could be, let's say, 150 feet from the source of music, okay?
Property line.
Okay, so I just want to make certain, so if my property line is down here, then my understanding is if you can hear it beyond 100 feet from the property line, well, in my particular case, I've got homes within that 100-feet barrier, so it really didn't make sense to me, you know, where the lines were being drawn and how they were. So, that, that makes perfect sense, I just wanted to clarify. So, thanks for giving me an opportunity to address the group. I trust that you will all make a good decision or one that's in the best interest of the city.
Can I ask you a question, please? Mark, all right, you were talking about those homes that are down there?
Yes.
All right. What's your answer to that? How would you deal with that?
You know, I, I really, the way I approach life, quite frankly, is I keep...
No, I don't want to approach life. I don't want to approach life.
I'm going to have to say this.
I want to approach those homes.
I'm going to tell you how I would address it, and I'm going to, I'm going to base it on how I approach life. I treat people the way I wish to be treated.
Okay.
And that's exactly why I diligently require an objective decibel meter reading at four points twice a night. Every night we want music outside, and oftentimes I do it myself. And I know good and well that when I take a 65-decibel reading at the perimeter, that if you and I were back there having a conversation, that our conversation would be louder than the music you could hear in the distance. And so, you know, it gets back to this whole issue of mixed use or commercial districts abutting residential districts. You know, I wasn't here when the city was built, but the fact of the matter is, this business, our business, happens to have been one of the ones that's been around for a good, long time.
Well, not as long as some of these residents up and down.
True, true. Now...
Parkview Drive.
True, true. I, I, look, as I said, you're in a difficult position, and I don't want to, I want to answer your question, which is to say, I want to be a good citizen. I want to be, I want to be respectful of the community of which I am a part, and I would hope that if I lived back there, that someone would do what I do, to try to control it. And from my perspective, mind you, I have always cut off an hour prior to the ordinance to be, to be a good citizen, if you will, and always run at least 10 decibel points below the requirement, again, to be a good citizen. That's what, that's what I've done, and that's what I will continue to do.
Do you stop at 9:00?
I stop at 9:00. I stop at 9:00 or 10:00. If, if it's fair weather and we have a great crowd, I will run to 10:00, but I will still, I will still cut off an hour before the required cutoff, which is 11:00. My published hours are generally 9:00, but really, and if I've got a patio full of people and everybody's having a great time and responding to the artist that's out there, then I'll let it go on, but I, I don't let it go past 10:00, though I could, I just simply don't. I could set up full bands outside in the gazebo area from time to time, but you know what? It's not worth, it's not, it's not worth, it's not worth it to me. It's not worth it to me for, for, you know, as I said, I don't want to be abrasive with the community that I'm around, so...
Thank you.
One question, please, may I?
So, as written, you are in approval of...
I, I didn't realize, quite frankly, that there was something that was, that you were looking to approve today, so I can't tell you.
We're not, we're not.
You know, I, to be quite frank, if you wanted my written notes, when I did read it from beginning to end, I could give you a number of things that I would ask that maybe you reconsider, but, you know, I mean, the fact of the matter is, you're in a tough position, so...
If I could speak specifically to the decibel meter reading, from an enforcement standpoint, the decibel meters is really unenforceable. We took our decibel meter to a half a dozen locations around the city. Each location, the ambient noise was higher than the ordinance permitted. So, we can't cite somebody for being in violation of a 75-decibel meter reading when the traffic at five points was louder than that. So, it's really a moot point as for, as far as reverting back to the previous...
Clearly, we need to ban traffic.
As far as enforcing it, it was problematic at the level that it was said.
Even with your four decimal, decimal registering, I could hear the music in the bedroom of the house that I entered.
Okay.
I could hear it. So, I really don't think that's an issue, the decimal stuffs. I, I think it's got me going...
It's really which side of the argument you're on. I mean, I think Dana made the argument a long time ago, if the police cited people for speeding without calibrated radar guns, then it's, you know, many of the citations, if not all, would not hold water, and, you know, no fines would ever be collected. And I, I think the same standard could, not that I wish to object to the new chief here, but the fact of the matter is, I do believe that there is a method of calibrating equipment. I do think we live in a technical age. I don't think that we're using technology to resolve a problem where technology could help. And, you know, as, though I noted this last time we were here, in the cover letter of the document that was put out, it, it basically stated that technology would be something that was part and parcel to what you all use to, to manage sound or noise going forward. So, it's not my decision. I'm trying to give you food for thought, but I will tell you, I think there are a lot of responsible business owners out there that, and I also think there are a lot of people in the community that want to be able to get out, listen to live music with their kids or their family, have a good time. I don't ever want to be thought of as somebody that's taking advantage of it. So, whatever, whatever you do, I'm going to operate with that.
All in bar.
I just...
There's another citizen who wants to comment.
Thank you, Greg. Just for clarification, you mentioned that Ed Silva had said there'd been live music on the outside since the Bunginut Pig has been up there.
That's what, that's what...
He told me that, too, but I don't believe.
Well, I mean, I'm not disputing Ed. I'm not disputing Ed. There's, there probably has been considerably loud music inside.
Somebody was inside, yes.
Inside. But it's, it's, it would, it's interesting to me that, that you, that these, the, I guess, the phenomenon of outside music, it hasn't been here for the last 25 years, hadn't been here for the last 20 years. It has, and that doesn't mean it's right or wrong, I'm not suggesting one way or the other. But I lived on Parkview Drive at one time, back years ago, and I doubt the Bunginut Pig was there, and I don't remember anything there. It wasn't. But, but I don't think live music has been at the Bunginut Pig for 25 years outside. The other thing is this, to, to, to put a high school basketball game, five home games, and put that in to try to muddy the water or cloud the water on an issue where you're there every night during the summer, and every weekend during the summer, is not the same thing as being, having the amplified music. It's simply not the same thing. I mean, you know, Franklin High School's been sitting out there on Hillsborough Road for a long, long time, and, but I'm just, well, I'm not going to, you know, cloud the waters by having Franklin High School or Centennial High School or anybody else being used as a, as a pitching stone or whatever between what we've got here and an issue and what we...
And the theater.
And the theater. The theater's been here, yeah. But, but, you know, I understand that you've got an issue, and I understand that we're promoting as much business as we can, and we want that business here. I certainly, from my perspective, would like to see the sales tax there, and I want to see the business, and I want to see as many people downtown as we can. But I can tell you, if you've got an issue sitting there and it's blaring in your window or something other, Margaret, and it probably has, then you're, you're listing to something that's, that's, that has affected your quality of life.
It is a quality of life, and a lot of my neighbors are here, and they know it's a quality of life. And some of them are not here, some of them are too sick or old to come, but they know it.
But we have to come up with some times that are agreeable, and it's probably going to be us to split the difference, and we're going to have, the businesses are not going to be, not going to be happy with 30 minutes one way or the other, nor are some of the residents going to be happy with the, with decisions made by 30 minutes one way or the other. But I think we've got to come up with that, and that's what we're looking at in this particular issue, but, but...
If I could say, from an enforcement standpoint, just to go back very quickly to the decibel meter, the other issue that we should need is the way sound travels. Where Mark stands in this property line, he may get a lower reading than if you walk a block and a half further, the way the noise emanates from his establishment. We've purchased wheels that we use for traffic accidents where we can walk off, as it clearly states in the ordinance, 100 yards, I'm sorry, 100 feet from the property line. That's 33 yards. It's a third of a football field. We feel that the plainly...
Which is barely past first base.
Yeah.
We feel that the plainly audible is easily understood where anyone without any sophisticated equipment, any resident, any business owner can very quickly ascertain whether or not their business or their resident is in compliance.
Come on up.
Thank you. Hey, Andy. I usually, while he's sitting down, I usually use the, the measurement off if it rattles my windows.
Choo-choo train.
Car windows or house, but car mostly. If it's rattling those windows, it's too loud.
What about the trains?
Well...
We can't do away with the trains.
But, but the train, of course...
That's a quality issue. Man, it probably a five or six houses from the train.
I think, I think, I think when we throw train issues and stuff like this in there, we're, what we've done is, we may not be able to control the train, but we can control that box that's sitting in there that's rattling somebody's window because it's got the bass turned up so loud.
Go ahead, man.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Ford. My name is Matt Woodburn. I live at 235 Third Avenue South in downtown Franklin, and I don't envy the position that you're in right now. Obviously, what we currently have in our wonderful town is not working. We have residents who are complaining about noise that is interrupting their quality of life, and we have business owners that are trying to make a living, which is also an important endeavor. So, what we probably can all agree on is what we currently have is not working. And when I find myself in a position when something's not working, okay, we got to make a change. And I'm willing to see some kind of a change that is some kind of a middle ground, just like you were referring to, Mr. Barnhill. It's not going to be perfect for the residents, nor is it going to be perfect for the business The issue is the length of time that the noise can go on into the evening and how loud it is. I feel sorry for our local police force having to... evening, and, uh, how loud it is. I feel sorry for our local police force having to, uh, go out to different locations and use a meter that, uh, sometimes is ineffective because it cannot, uh, always be accurate. Some places, the ambient noise, as you've heard, is louder than, uh, what the current ordinance is, so that doesn't work. We need to, uh, give them something that is enforceable. As far as the length of time, if you want to hear from one citizen, when I'd like to hear, uh, things stop at least amplified music that, uh, is too loud, that would be, uh, Sunday night through Thursday night, what all of us might use to call, uh, school nights. Uh, let's see if we can have that stop around nine o'clock. And then for Friday and Saturday night, which are really, I, I think, the bread and butter nights of these businesses here locally, if they want to go on until eleven, well, then I'm just gonna have to suck it up on those nights and, and deal with it. They've gotta make a living. So I would be happy to, uh, see that, uh, on Friday and Saturday, eleven o'clock being the, uh, time. That's, uh, what I'd like to see you consider, and when you put a, a new solution in place, you try it for a time. Maybe it'll work, maybe it won't. If, if it doesn't work, you're just gonna find yourself in the same position that all of you are in right now, with, uh, the residents and some of the business owners bickering with one another. So if you find that it doesn't work, then you're gonna have to make another attempt. But when all of us elected you into these positions, all we wanted to see was effort. So as far as doing something with this, let's make some kind of a change. Let's see some, some effort, uh, of meeting the requests of both parties in a middle grounds kind of way, and then let's see how it works. Is that simple?
Thank you.
Other citizen comments?
Howdy, folks. This is my first time amongst you guys, so as a introduction, is I'm Bob Flowers. I live at one-one-one-zero-two, South Course View in Franklin, and, uh, I'm not involved in city government, uh, nor do I own one of these establishments, but I am a patron of these establishments. And from some of the things that I've heard today is I'm really shocked because it sounds like you're trying to turn Franklin into a fuddy duddy place. Talking about nine o'clock on weekdays and ten o'clock on weekends, the parties don't even get started, people don't get wound up. People get off work at five, they get home, they get dressed, they go out. At seven-thirty, you might wanna have a beer, have some dinner, and listen to some music, and at nine o'clock it has to be cut off? I just don't agree with that. And I think that we're dealing with some residents that do live close to these establishments, but they probably knew where they were moving into, when they moved into that situation. And I think that Franklin, being the town that it is, with the demographics the way that it is, the way the town is built, is we're gonna have commercial right next to residential. That's just the way that it is. And I think that when you look at the number of people that are actually being affected by that sound, in comparison with the employees, with the patrons, and the businesses themselves, that you've got your numbers whacked out. I really do. So I, I'm just here to say, as a resident of Franklin, and someone who likes live music, that I don't want to see it curtailed like that. And I know there are certain situations, not right in downtown, but on the outskirts, where there are some commercial businesses that do abut. And from being in those places, I know that they try very hard to abide by the rules and regulations, and to not disturb the people that are close to them. However, it happens, and I've been there on occasions where the police have been called, and I was in that establishment, and it didn't seem like it was that loud to me. I just don't want to see things stifled anymore. I really don't. I think we're heading down the wrong road, uh, is we don't all go to bed at nine o'clock or ten o'clock, and I think that we all deserve the right to be able to live the life that we want to, without disturbing other people within certain, certain degrees. And I can tell that you've got some comments about my statements.
Dear, I will, I would not think about making a comment to you, but I thank you for coming and expressing your thoughts.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a comment.
Please.
Margaret's lived here all her life, and she probably has been here, but Margaret, even if you've lived downtown all your life, you know, the fact that downtown has been here before you actually lived here, because the, downtown was here. Uh, but, you know, it changes. The face and the atmosphere changes, and things happen, and, and I'm sure in the seventeen hundreds they didn't have, uh, eighteen hundreds when, you know.
I didn't hear that one.
When the city was founded, and the city was founded, we had the Civil War, but that was pretty loud.
But then they had a.
No, 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 we shouldn't, we shouldn't have a noise on it.
They had a permit.
All right, let's get.
But, but, I'm, I'm, I'm being humorous here a little bit, you know, if you've understood. But in all seriousness, in all seriousness, uh, Margaret has lived here all her life, and her family has. Uh, and downtown, downtown, and all due respect to Margaret, has, has changed, you know, and, um, but there are other people have moved in. But one of the comments that you made was, um, that we, that, one of the comments you made, yeah, you're absolutely right. We have allowed more commercial, and through the years, we're allowing more commercial next to residential.
I said, we have loud?
No, more.
Oh, allow.
You're allowed. We have allowed, and we are going into mixed use, we're going into these, uh, density communities, where we're, where we're finding out that we're, we're creating, you know, issues for ourselves. Um, it's just the nature of the beast. Uh, when we have density, we have mixed use, uh, and of course, when Shana said that, you know, people move up above a commercial, I mean, they know that. They know they're moving above commercial. But I live in McKay's Mill, we have commercial, we have residential right there. West Haven has the same thing. Many, many communities have that. And so, you know, yeah, we, we, um, sometimes help create those issues, but they are what they are, and, um, you know, we'll just try to deal with it.
Because my hope is that you guys should do consider the times and the method for which you do determine the loudness. Um, I think that having a certain distance is only gonna be subjective to certain people. It depends on their hearing. I think that to be more accurate, that you do have to use something like a decibel reading to determine that. Now, I've heard three or four times that that's not gonna work, because when we take those readings at that particular residence, the ambient sound is louder than what's coming from the band. Well, if that's the case, then what's the problem? What's the problem?
All right, any other citizen comments?
Okay, thanks, guys.
Question?
Come on up, Ms. Bacon.
Thank you. Um, I'm Ernie Bacon. I live two-two-four Fourth Avenue South. I applaud what the efforts are, uh, that have been put into this. So I think my best use of my time would be to say that I generally echo the words of my neighbor, Matt Woodburn. Let's work together, uh, to address this issue. I feel like that the police department, I think the legal department, and I think that you folks have gotten the, you've honed it down, you've addressed amplification, the distance recommendation's on the table. And I do know that, and I listen very carefully, and I am very sensitive about the issue of distance, where the, uh, different zones abut. But all in all, I feel like that a hundred feet is probably a reasonable place to start. I seek, as y'all do, an ordinance that is enforceable. And I feel like that you're getting there, you've made a lot of progress. I would echo the times, I, I think a lot of effort, a lot of listening has gone into where the times are in the proposed, proposal you have before you. Uh, I would ask you to perhaps give further consideration to the nine for the, uh, school nights, weeknights, and, uh, as Matt said, you know, eleven, you know, we understand it, people who live downtown, uh, to a point. There's always examples of real bad violations, and we all point to those, and, and, and I can, we can recite them. But if we, as a city, uh, government and citizens, address this working together, to where you have it now, hey, give it a try. Uh, I think a lot of progress has been made to delete the decibels, to get into a definition of sound that is understandable, acceptable, and more important, and more importantly, enforceable. So thank you for your efforts. Uh, I would, uh, all of us are interested in acting in, uh, in issues like this. I suppose noise is much like parking. We're all experts.
You've got one more, at least.
Let's see, I'm gonna recognize, uh, Will and Ben Fay. Fay, actually, come up.
My name's Will Gordon, and I live at two thirty-eight First Avenue South in downtown Franklin. I wasn't gonna speak today, because I've got a lot of family issues going on, and I'm emotional, and I don't need to be onstage right now, but I feel like I'm fighting for my life here, and I need to, I need to speak. Uh, I was born and raised in downtown Franklin. I've lived here my whole life. I've seen this town change. Matter of fact, there used to be pigs on the square, and they used to sell them on the courthouse staff.
I worked at the sale barn everywhere.
There we go, see? So we've seen this town change, we've seen it evolve. We have, in this table right here, have created this town that we're living in. We just put ten million dollars into the Franklin Theater, which is not a theater, it is a music venue. We all want another music venue in this town. We're opening up Harlinsdale as another music venue. I have a feeling that abuts residents. There's a field there, but there are also people there. That's a lot louder music than anything that I could ever do at my establishment, Kimrose. You asked Mark what he's done, or what he would do to, to, you know, help the situation. I've, I can answer that. I've put on new doors, studio doors, I've, uh, buffered all the windows, I've fired bands, I've lost a ton of money on this deal. I continue to make advances towards trying to muffle the sound. I don't book bands that are too loud. I've got one or two things that happen. I've got kids that play there. The kids don't have anywhere else to play. Margaret said, find them some other place to play. Well, I don't wanna do that. I'm in the fundraising business. I actually do about three or four fundraisers a month at Kimrose. That's, you can check the facts. We literally do that, for soldiers, for the kids, for all sorts of people. And, uh, you know, music, I understand that people wanna go to bed at different times. I mean, you know, I used to get up at six in the morning, every morning, and I used to wanna go to bed a lot earlier. Well, now I go to bed a lot later, I don't get up at six in the morning. So if somebody starts their longboard at seven in the morning, that's gonna make me upset. And who do I call? I understand that. That's just, this is all subjective, and if, the one thing that I'm curious about is if, if, you know, I'm in violation for making noise a hundred feet from my property, do I get to go into that person's bedroom and see what that sounds like? I mean, I don't, how, how are we gonna measure this? Someone's gonna have to show me some hard evidence that I was actually breaking the law if I'm gonna be cited and fined every time I'm doing this. Not to mention, whenever, Lisa, we had, we had not had anybody disturbance in a long time. I applaud my neighbors for that. I think we've made a serious effort here. I think they can tell that we have, and I wanna work together on this, too. I think that, you know, we're, we're backstepping when we say, obviously, we all wanted it to be midnight on the weekends and eleven o'clock during the week. Well, I think that they came with some common ground with ten o'clock in the week and eleven o'clock in the week, so we can honor that. But when you take that and then fight again and say nine o'clock, then, you know, we're gonna come back and try to fight again. I mean, whole the city, the town of Franklin, ask everybody in this city what they think of about this, and I guarantee you, the voters of this city are gonna, they're gonna fight for the arts and the music. That's what people live in downtown Franklin for. Ken, someone was talking about abusive noise across the street from him at two oh two. Ken lives across the street, and it didn't bother him. So I think it's all relative. I mean, no one, this is all such a tricky thing here, but if you get into making these, you know, these strict guidelines for people, it's really gonna break down the fabric of this community. I mean, you know, I, I can't afford to go, come down here every five minutes to meet with you guys and then try to keep my business alive, too. We're a family-owned and operated business. I work every single day of my life, pretty, you know, sixty-something hours a week, and, you know, my kid hangs out there, everyone else's kids hang out there. It's just something that, you know, I'm, I'm kinda done dealing with this deal. I want us all to work together, but it, uh, people are not being rational in this situation. They're gonna continue to be upset about it, and there's never gonna be, uh, you know, we just need to pick and choose our battles here. Come up with a guideline, let's move on from that. But I don't know how you measure it from a hundred feet from my property unless there's a, some sort of gauge there. I mean, I don't, I don't, 'cause otherwise it's gonna be that the neighbor's saying, I can hear him a hundred feet from my property every single, every night. They're gonna call and say that, and that's just, I don't know how you can gauge that at all. Anyway, I'm sorry for getting up here and ranting and rambling on like this, but like I said, I wasn't gonna do that, but, uh, thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you.
I'll keep my shoes on here. I'm Fay Clark, oh, sorry, and I live at three oh five Third Avenue South. And my husband and I purchased our home in nineteen ninety-one, and we had no idea that we were gonna be right across the street from this noisy place. And I didn't plan to speak tonight either, and I'm a bit unnerved. But the thing that concerns me is, I'm told all these windows, all these doors have been placed at ten-twenty on Friday night. Uh, they were all outside, picking and singing, and yes, I could hear it in my bedroom, but it doesn't do any good. No one worries. If you call the police, the minute the police comes and they're gone, it started all over again. And I'm right across from them.
What do you say, it started over again the same?
That noise.
The same night?
Yes. The minute they're outside.
So what happens at eleven o'clock or ten o'clock?
Oh, oh, it was, uh, it keeps going. It keeps going. It's, goes after twelve lots of nights. I have a whole history that I should have brought. And I've stopped calling establishments, because if it's not gonna work with the police, and I've been told by other neighbors that they refuse to answer the phone, and, uh, then the cell phone somehow doesn't work too, apparently. I haven't done that. Any further questions for me? But I find it very concerning and totally different from what we expected when we purchased in downtown Franklin in a residential area, is I understand it still is. Is it?
It's commercial, is it?
But where she lives, where she lives, so it's residential.
Where Kimrose is, is essentially, central commercial.
Across the street, yes. Right, across the street, it's commercial. Right. So what do you all suggest? What do we do?
Well, what we're trying to do is come up with something that is enforceable. So that's why we're having all this discussion.
Okay.
Again, we hope that we can come up with something that'll be acceptable to everyone, and we can try it out and cooperate to try to come up with an answer and give Chief Rehensky and his staff something to implement and use.
And I'm with Mr. Woodburn and Mr. Bacon. I mean, it's not a perfect world. I want to be, and I think I have been, very fair, and, um, with guidance from some of my neighbors and other folks, uh, I, I've tried very hard to do the right thing here, but I'm ready for a change. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you.
Now, I, I would want to know, what is, what would you want to see?
I would want to see.
Business car?
Conducted, that'd be nice, too. It is a residential area, and I, and I adore Peter and Rudy Jordan, and I think Will is a fine man until he starts all of his racket.
Any other citizen comments? If not, we're gonna move on to item number eleven. Thanks, Fay.
Could I ask just a question from the chief? Thank, thank you. No.
Sure. Sure.
How many citations have been issued for excessive noise? I'd like to know, you know, and it doesn't have to be off your head, top of your head tonight, but in the last year, in the last two years, in the last five years?
I can tell you, Annadoree, while we have issued citations to vehicles for violating the state ordinance, we haven't issued any to any businesses for violating the local city municipal ordinance.
Well, I think that's very concerning. I'll be honest with you.
And that speaks to the enforceability of what we have. That's why we brought this issue up since the last two years.
Okay, so, but before the two years, we didn't have the decibel meters, and so there were no citations then either? Is that correct?
We've been very fortunate in that we do have a concerned business group that we can work with. When we receive complaints, we respond to the complaints, and we talk to either the manager on duty or, as you've seen, we make contact with the owners. And through voluntary compliance, we found a happy medium, but we recognize that's not going to always be the case. That's why we want some people and ordinance that we can enforce. So when we do reach a situation where we can't reach that happy medium, we'll have an alternative.
All right. Are you done, Hallman?
I was just going to ask, is there, have you, has anyone followed up about after the police leave then, that there is a resumption? I think that's something that we heard, not just tonight, but other times, that, in other words, it stopped briefly, but then it resumed. Have you had that?
Yes. We're aware of the locations that generate these calls typically, and we generally keep an eye on them before we receive the calls. The officers who work the respective zones, they know where the call, where the problems are going to emanate from, and we make it a point to, you know, keep an eye and an ear out before the calls come in.
All right.
On this issue, we've got to govern in the middle. We cannot allow our policy to be driven by the lowest common denominator, or the person who complains the most, or the person who would have us make no rule. Neither of those is acceptable. So the issue is, when you get right down to it, the bottom line is, at some point, your neighbors are entitled to some peace, and the question is, what time? That's it. Okay? That's it. And so different people may have different ideas about what's reasonable. I, for one, think 9:00 is a little early, simply because I know I've been out on the baseball fields with the lights on past 10:30. Now, that's me, okay? I'm just one person that lives in this community that's willing to tolerate something a little later. But I think 9:00, in my opinion, is two standard deviations removed from the middle. And I think, you know, anything after midnight begins to infringe upon the rights of the people who are being affected and not participating in the event. So, you know, 10:00 and 11:00, or 10:00 or 11:00 and 12:00, something like that's where we're going to wind up. That's it. We can talk around in circles, but the bottom line is, in this world, if you live in a city, you're going to have to tolerate noise and imposition from your neighbors, period. Now, it may be music, it may be lawn mowers, it may be kids playing out in the street, chasing lightning bugs. You're just going to have to tolerate it. If you don't like that and all you want to hear is crickets, then you should live somewhere way away from everybody else. We're picking a time on the clock, and that's it. This is not that complicated.
So those four members on the panel, are you guys okay with me putting this on an agenda, and you guys can make amendments to it as we go?
The time to decide has come.
Put it on there.
And then the ding and the bells and everything else can be addressed another time in another section of this ordinance.
Well, yeah, that whole section is later on, and we talk about certain exemptions, certain things that aren't in and of themselves, noise ordinances.
Just to make it more fun, when we get done with this, you need to bring that back.
Well, then, yeah, if you have some amendment that you want to make, let me know.
Well, let us, perhaps, before this goes, is there any interest in looking at the distinction between mixed-use district and a commercial-abutting residential? I think that is an issue.
I will meet with planning, and I'll find out what those zones are, and if I can find something out, I'll draft it that way. If not, I'll leave it the way it is and let you guys, you can easily draft, tell me what kind of a paragraph you would like, and we can make that amendment if you all agree to that.
On that issue, I think distinguishing zones becomes a slide into oblivion. You know, the reality is that out in a warehouse district, no one cares. Okay? There's no one there to complain. We're only talking about residential areas where the complaints are coming from, period. The Bunginut Pig is not going to call Will Jordan's place and say, you guys are being too loud. Okay? That's not going to happen. It's only going to be neighbors calling on businesses that they live nearby. It makes no sense to me to include distinctions upon zoning. It just needs to be simple and tidy and say, within this many feet of the property line of any source, between this hour and this hour, that's it. It doesn't matter whether it's in a commercial, a mixed use, it's going to be people who want to go to bed calling. That's it.
So instead of us, we should concern ourselves with, say, 50 feet from the resident, you know, onto the residential park.
50 feet and 100 feet.
Because that's where the complaint is coming from. It's not necessarily where it comes from, a commercial or whatever.
It shouldn't matter.
Okay. What you, and let me just say one thing to you about the time. If you say 11:00 and 12:00, you are not considering one single resident in this room in the downtown area. There's not, there are very few people in this downtown area that are going to be up at 11:00 wanting to listen to the banging of a drum in their bedroom. So if you put that in there, you are absolutely going against the wishes of every downtown resident. I would, in my word, in my word.
We just heard from people who came forward and said that...
No, he didn't even listen. He doesn't live in, doesn't even live here. Most of you...
I'm talking about the business owners who clearly, who obviously have people who are willing to come down there and not only be next door to it, they're willing to be in the room with it. So there are people, you're mistaken, Ms. Martin. Your advocacy is clear, but you're mistaken. There are people who don't, who do want this. I mean, there are people who do not want to have to go home from their music venue at 10:00.
I think we're not talking on the same level.
I'm going to allow 60 more seconds for one more comment, and you have 60 seconds, Juan.
I'm Wanda Shepherd. I'm with the chill band. I've played at Bunginut Pig inside with a seven-piece, loud, with the door shut. I've played outside with a three-piece, and Mark has been very diligent. I can attest to that. I have also played at Kimbrows, and I've also played at Harlinsdale Farms. I've also played at Wind Down Main outside at the Red House, and I've also played at Main Street Festival. So I've kind of covered them all, and I'm sure I've got a lot of angry people, a lot of happy people. But I just wanted to say, I'm from here, Lawrence, 1808, but I've seen a lot of changes in this town as well. And I do remember, and I remember talking to business owners in downtown Franklin, when you could walk down Main Street, you know, at 8:00, 9:00, and there would be nobody, and all the businesses would shut because they just didn't have people in downtown Main Street. And I know you remember that. We had that little time, you know, and then luckily, we picked up on that, and now we've got a lot going on in downtown Main Street. And a lot of it is the live music. I think a lot of the live music at Bunginut and other places may have come from the fact that they did go non-smoking, which I do also think has been a great thing for our city. And, but that does push people outside, and they do like to listen to music outside. But I just want, I don't know what the answer is, and I do understand also, you know, not being able to go to sleep when you want to go to sleep, but I've just got to say this. I know that we draw people, I know our band alone draws people from other places, and they come here and they spend a lot of money. And they do it, and we're, people are starting to look at Franklin as Music City USA more than Nashville sometimes, and we've actually got better fingers, I think, you know, and we've got some great things going on here. And I just want, you know, listening to Will, you know, I feel his pain. He has gone to a lot of expense. And I do know that I have a lot of people that would just go, he's got a certain niche there in our community, just like Bunginut Pig, and they're known outside of our community, and they bring in people from all over.
10 seconds.
Okay. That's all I wanted to say. Just try to keep that in mind, too, that we used to be a desolate downtown almost, and now we're not. We're thriving, and I think a lot of that is because of the music, and we have to take that into consideration. So, thank you.
What are you singing next, Wanda?
I'll be Bunginut Pig on June 30.
All right. Good little plug here.
All right. Number 11, Consideration of Contract 2011-0088 between the City of Franklin, Tennessee, and Community Development Resources, Inc., for Administering the Fair Housing and Home Ownership Counseling for the Current Program Year.
This is an ongoing, continuing program. It's part of our overall...
Any questions? I see no questions for Vernon. We'll reconvene at 7:00.